Welcome, everyone here to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing this Wednesday, October 30th, 2019. We've opened at 7:00 PM here at the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We will go through the agenda one at a time. The public will be invited to speak to the cases at the appropriate time. I do need to tell everyone that we are being recorded. Someplace there's a camera, I guess, and they will put this up on the YouTube Channel 18 site in a day or so. We'll begin with our members introducing themselves, please.
Jim Hilliard.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hederstedt.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
Chris Murphy.
James Armstrong.
Mike Capoli.
And Sheila Delaney Secretary.
Okay, we have a continued case that's not on our agenda. It was continued, case 2019-28, the Richmere Harbor case. Yeah, it's not on the agenda. But we did get a letter from Attorney Singer. He's requested a further continuance until our January 29th, 2020 meeting because his client, and remember, we talked about this last month when we continued it, had to go back to the Conservation Commission. They required revisions to the plans. He has to go back yet again to Conservation in December and then to the Planning Board after that. So they would not have the plans approved and ready for us for the December meeting. So I see no reason not to continue it to January 29th. We certainly don't want to look at an incomplete set of plans.
I move we continue it till the 29th?
First case, the first case, I'll second, second by Mr. Donahue, will have, well, just the first five of us vote on this one, the regular members, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, me, and Mr. Donahue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case continued. It'll be our first case on the 29th of January 2020. Okay, Mr. Hederstedt, if you could call the first case on the agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Case 2019-33. Patricia M. Seal Soul has applied for a special permit to construct a three-room enclosed porch within the setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich 325-54, Table 2, Area Regulation, set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6. The property is located in 16 Earl Terrace, map 12, partial, N1-27, in the RH-1 zoning district. We have one comment from the Health Department which has no concerns.
And we're not going to read the comments in the correspondence. It'll take forever. It's in the records, in the file. If anyone had wanted to look at it, it has been available. So we will simply reference those comments tonight. Could the applicant please come forward to the table? And you can introduce yourself, please, both of you.
I'm Patricia Soul.
But a little more volume for those that are hearing challenged.
I'm sorry, I'm Patricia Soul.
Okay.
I'm George Avery.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
It's a three-season room, not a three-room. I didn't hear the season part.
Okay, if you could present your case, please.
So I narrated in my application, I'm just looking, I live at 16 Earl Terrace, I'm sure you're familiar with the street. It's just a little street with little tiny cottages on it. And by adding a screened porch, you just get a little extra space that I hope to be able to have a meal inside with the family and a little extra sitting area. Like I said, my family is small. We certainly don't stay there all together, but it's nice to share some family time and be inside when it rains. And especially with the current season of Triple E, it becomes even more important to have a little haven inside.
Okay, before you go on, voting on the case will be Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. I will not vote. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Capoli will not vote on this particular case. Anything further?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard, questions?
I've reviewed all your materials. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Muller.
Yes, Mrs. Soul, I enjoyed your write-up about your street and enjoyed the drive down there to see it. I just have a niggling little question. The front yard setback on this chart says 55.6, this one says 56. It's 50.6, which is it? I think it might just have been a little mistranscription.
No, I only have the stamped one.
On the application, it says, required by bylaw, there's no number there, existing 25, which I think is required by the bylaw, and the proposed is 55.6, but this is showing 50.6.
Oh, I see.
I see.
It says proposed 55.6, and proposed 50. Yeah, that was done by the engineer, so I don't know what to tell you on that. He's got both. He has on the frontage 50, and then the front yard setback 55.6.
Right.
I'm not sure which one it is, but either one qualifies us, so...
I would think so, but Mr. Ryer, do we have to have the site plan and the application in sync?
Well, the application, I think, is handwritten, my guess.
That's what it looked like, yes.
Probably made a mistake. I think the stamped plan would go along.
Okay. Otherwise, I have no questions. I think it's a lovely idea.
Thank you.
And a pretty little street, as you said.
Mr. Hederstedt.
I have no comments, other than I think it meets the Gale case. There's now no non, no new nonconformity, and therefore I recommend we go ahead and approve it.
Yeah, I agree. It not only meets the Gale case for that reason, but also our bylaw. The only question I have, the deck is going away, right?
Yes.
Okay. I do think, though, we probably would need to put a construction condition on that you have no significant construction from, what do you do, June 30th to Labor Day, either '21 or '21, because it's tight down there.
Yes. I got that.
Mr. Donahue.
I have no questions, but you clearly need storage.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
No questions.
Mr. Armstrong.
No questions.
Mr. Capoli.
No questions.
Thank you.
Would you folks like to add anything further?
I think I'm all set.
No.
Does anyone in the public want to speak to this case, either for or against it? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion from the voting members to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Second, either Mr. Hederstedt or Mr. Donahue, any discussion by the board? Wait, we need to vote on that motion to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, public hearing's closed. Discussion by the board on the case? Any discussion? No?
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion in the case, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the ZBA approve the application under case 2019-33 for a special permit to reconstruct a three-season enclosed porch within the setbacks. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich 325-54, Title 2, Area Regulation, MGL 40A, Section 6, property located at 16 Earl Terrace Road, map 12, partial, N1-27, in the RH-1 zoning district. The approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documentation for planned alteration or reconstruction for a non-formally nonconforming single-family residential structure. And that is in accordance with the Gale case, and there's no new con conformity, and there will be no new resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. With one other addition or special note that should be made is that because the property is so close to residential location, there can be no substantial demolition or external construction or substantial landscaping during the period 30 June 2020 through the Labor Day 2021.
Twenty-one.
No, 2020, and then you got to repeat.
And maybe extend it till 2021.
Right, but so both periods, 2020 and 2021?
Right.
June 30th.
I'll be done before Jim.
Right, but sometimes these projects can get started in time, so... Do we have a second for the motion from the voting members?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong, any further discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, special permit granted.
Thank you.
Good luck, you see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do these plans back, sir?
We have it.
Yeah, we don't use them back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is number 34.
Yep.
Next one.
Okay, Mr. Hederstedt, if you'd call the next case, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Case 2019-34. Edith S. Ravell has applied for a special permit to create a new foundation and additions, including a new second floor to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, Section 325-54 and 325, Table 2, Area Regulation, set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6. The property is located in Sale, at 3 Sale Loft Road, map 7, partial, D20, in the RH-1 zoning district. We do have a 100% support from a local resident who is, lives next door, so that is in the record. And there is a comment from the Harwich Department of Health Department, and that is in the record also, which we will discuss, I'm sure, during the meeting.
Actually, there are two homeowners that have voice support for this.
I only have one, sir.
Okay, we do have two.
Okay.
Okay, voting on the case will be Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli.
Could you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Please, voting one more time.
Who's going to vote? Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli.
Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Kroll, if you could introduce yourself for the record and who is with you at table, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Harwich Port, here seated with Edith Ravanelle to my right, and she's the owner of the property. Her husband, Andre, is also in the audience, and her builder, Mike Fitzpatrick, is also in the audience. This property is located on Sale Loft Road, off of C Street. Ms. Ravanelle submitted with her petition a very detailed narrative, the history of the property, and what she intends to do with it, and why she needs to do it. So I'm assuming that was all in your packet that you received. You also have the certified plot plan by Eldridge Engineering that has the zoning compliance table on it, as well as the building and elevation plans with some 3D renderings. Ms. Ravanelle is, will not be demolishing, will not be demolishing and replacing. It's a renovation. And the result will have the same number of bedrooms as the existing dwelling. I do have a plan that shows the height, trying to have some preventative medicine, some concern about the possible height, grid height of the roof. Do you folks look at to show that it's really only 23 feet, 10 inches, and not, I think it's at 51 feet, and I'm sure Mr. Ryer was...
That was one of the questions, yes.
Going to move on that one.
Oh, going through the roof.
I think because they started with the elevation of 25, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, on the plan. I assumed that, but I just, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. It is 23 feet and 10 inches, and I have another copy if you would like. You also have the denial letter, so-called, by the building commissioner, who says that we do not meet the setback requirement, and you can see, and that we need a special permit from relief from the board. You can see from the certified plot plan that on the northerly lot line, we are 18.4 feet from Sale Loft Street, whereas the current requirement is 25 feet. The southerly lot line, the existing building is 19.1, that needs to be, current code would be 20 feet. The rear lot line is 13.3, and the current requirement is 20 feet. So we're clearly a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family residential dwelling. The addition is in the bold line there, and that will be more than 20 feet. So you might ask, well, why do you have to be here, then? Because we're creating on the second floor, the renovation, creating more habitable space within the setback requirement. So we're intensifying the existing nonconformity by putting a second floor on within the 20 feet and the 25 feet, which is a classic Gale case situation, where we're intensifying an existing nonconformity, both on the south and north lot lines, as well as the rear lot line. So we're asking for a special permit this evening on the grounds that the proposed renovation would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and ask that you grant that for the owner this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard.
I have no questions. I think your petition meets the Gale case as well.
Ms. Muller.
I have no further questions. Can I get rid of my yellow stickies that say height? Question mark.
Made my night, Ms. Muller.
It was worth your trouble, right?
It was.
Mr. Hederstedt.
I have no questions.
Are the two sheds going to remain?
Only the new shed, this shed over on the left side will remain.
The one on the north towards Sale Loft Street will not. The one towards...
One up by the 18.4 line?
Yes.
Okay. And so we're going to go up?
One floor. Yes.
And where the dark line is, that's going to be the addition?
Correct.
Okay.
And the patio is also leaving. And even though it says on the plan, building to be raised, that's a typo, it should be R-A-I-S-E-D, means we're going to lift the building. We're not going to raise it and demolish it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought you had said earlier demolish.
What I tried to make clear was we're not demolishing and replacing.
Maybe, okay.
Just renovating.
Raised, through me. Yes, I agree it meets the Gale case and I think the bylaw, we wouldn't need that construction condition for 2020 and 2021. That's a pretty tight area. Mr. Donahue.
It certainly meets the Gale case and is going to be an addition, or an exit for the neighborhood. An addition is going to be where the deck is right now.
That's right.
Mr. Murphy?
I have no questions.
Mr. Armstrong?
No questions.
Mr. Capoli?
My only comment, my first comment would be, it's a tight neighborhood, so we'd need to put the construction caveat on this case.
Right, yeah, definitely.
And we get a lot of plans for us every month, and this roof deck is one of the neatest.
Isn't that good?
It's been in a long time.
Very good.
It's really, really neat. So you guys, whoever came up with that, it was yourself or Eric?
It was a team effort, but I'll defer to the guys behind me.
Really nice.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to address this application? There are none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing closed. Any discussion by the board on the case itself? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the case.
Case 2019-34 is hereby approved by the board for the issuance of a special permit to create a new foundation and additions, including a second floor into the pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. This application was made pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, 325-54, 325, Table 2, Area Regulation, set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6, property is located at 3 Sale Loft Road, map 7, partial, 20D, in the RH-1 district. And the application is approved for this special permit because the documentation submitted by the presenter is for the construction of a nonconforming, to attach to a nonconforming single-family dwelling, and is in accordance with the Gale case, no, no new conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. However, because of the location, the property is so close to residential's, residential area that there'll be no substantial de, demolishing or reconstruction or substantial landscaping during the period 30 June 2020 through, through Labor Day 2020, and/or the same period 2021 through 2021.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Capoli, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, just to be clear on the condition, interior work is allowed during that period of time.
Right.
Yes.
Substantial, right. I got you. Exterior.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You still probably want to keep the contractor vehicles down, but that's between you and your neighbors. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, special permit granted. You can have any of these extras.
Would you like the plans back?
You don't have to reset them.
I did all the copying work. I'll take these.
Did a nice job on that. That's a good sign, isn't it? Do you want, there's some more here if you want. Some more there if you want.
And here.
You got enough? There you go.
Here's some more, sir. You're good.
It's on the mic. No tag backs.
Thank you.
Any ready?
Case 2019-35, Patrick and Catherine, Patricia?
Patraca.
Patraca.
Thank you. Patraca.
Sugar agent, Attorney William Kroll.
Kroll rhymes with bold.
Kroll rhymes with bold. Have applied for special permit in the alternative of violence to demolish and replace an existing, nonconforming, single-family residential condominium. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, 325-54, Table 2, Area Regulation is set forth in MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and if necessary, Chapter 40A, Section 10. The property is located in 9 Bell's Neck Road, map 10, partial, F1-8, in the RM zoning district. There's only one comment, and that comes from the Health Department, which I'm sure will be discussed during the application being reviewed.
Okay, we will have voting. Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Harwich Port, representing Patrick Patraca, actually Reserve Commander Patraca from the Coast Guard, has been in service in the Coast Guard for 37 and a half years. And this is where he wants to be in his full retirement. This is a cottage colony off of Bell's Neck, in between Bell's Neck Road and Mansion Street in West Harwich, on the north side of Route 28. It was an old cottage colony, and then, I'm thinking it was 20, 30 years ago, that they made these, each cottage into a freestanding condominium unit. It's not like the Belmont, Mr. Hilliard. It's different. Could be. But they, each unit can be sold separately, and it has its own exclusive use area or yard area, but it doesn't fit nicely into the grid subdivision concept, where you have frontage on a road, and you have a lot and setbacks from lot lines. So it's a little, they're trying to put a square peg into a somewhat round hole here. So there's an existing unit known as Pine Rest. All of the units in the association have the word pine in them. So this is the Pine Rest unit, and the Patracas are seeking to demolish and replace the existing unit, move it a little bit off of the line, further off the line, it's about two feet off, and then put it seven feet off the line, and enlarge it, the footprint a little bit. In order to do so, we had to have the master deed of the condominium amended to allow this expansion of the unit, because it cuts into the common area somewhat. It's been done before. One of the other units came before this board, and I submitted a copy of that decision with this petition, and this board granted relief in 2005. So they've amended the master deed before for a different unit. They've also been before this board for a special permit and received a special permit from this board in '05 to from this board in oh five to undertake a similar project. The amending of the master deed, which Mr. Patracca and I did, takes a three-fourths vote of all the unit owners, and it was a unanimous vote of three-fourths of the unit owners. So they're all in favor of this. You can see on the certified plot plan, the diagonally shaded area is the existing dwelling unit, and then the heavier dark line area is the proposed dwelling. As I said, it moves from a couple of feet from the lot line to seven feet, more or less, from the lot line. So it's becoming less non-conforming, or more conforming, depending on your point of view. There will also be a second floor added, so again, we would be constructing a dwelling with, within the twenty-foot setback from the lot line. You do have a lot line there, so it is supposed to be twenty feet there, so we're pre-existing non-conforming, we're making it more conforming. We're also adding a second floor of habitable space. So it's again a Gale case situation where the footprint is slightly larger and the second floor has habitable space, so we're intensifying a pre-existing, non-conforming residential dwelling unit. And our, we would argue that there would be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood if the special permit is granted. I submitted a copy of the, of this board's decision in case number oh five dash thirty-nine for another unit in that complex, and the vote, the board voted unanimously to grant that back in oh five for a similar demolition and replace. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you. Commander Patracca, I really want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Few and far between that we have them. My question is, is it your representation, Mr. Attorney, that all of the master deed, rules and regulations have been complied with, with respect to you taking this and doing this construction?
They've amended the master deed.
Okay, all right. I have no other questions, thank you.
And it's recorded. I recorded it last July twenty-ninth at the Registry of Deeds with the vote, everybody signing it and so forth.
Ms. Muller?
This is my night for picky, picky questions.
Don't feel obligated, Ms. Muller.
Sometimes I do feel obligated. Existing dwelling number nine, exists seven, nine, nine, ten. This is really existing dwelling number eight, isn't it?
Yes. I've only looked at it a thousand times. I've never saw that.
It's like trying to proofread your own stuff, so that's an error on the site plan.
Unit eight, and that's what the master deed says, is unit, or the amendment to the master deed says, unit eight.
Okay.
But good catch.
Are these, I think everybody who found their way to this place before this meeting deserves a medal. Are these places winterized?
Some are.
Is yours winterized now?
The current one?
Yes.
No, ma'am.
The new one will be?
Absolutely. It's going to get a full foundation, and that's, that's really why we're here. Because if it had any form of foundation, I would have kept it and rebuilt it, but it's just rotted.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's a good point, if I may, Mr. Chairman, because it used to be these were seasonal, and they amended the master deed previously to allow them to be year-round.
Mr. Hederstadt?
Can you try to clarify to me why, what is, what is going to happen of the proposed, with the proposed deck now encroaching?
Is what?
The, our Board of Health seems to see, think, encroaching on the leach field. How do you, how do you address that issue?
So, the Department of Health and the whole town has been amazing working with me. So once they gave me the guidelines of how far I could have posts, how far I could have a slab foundation and a full foundation, the engineer went about reconfiguring the, the location of the building. So the answer is, even though he located the field itself, there'll be a pin, the plan itself called for a deck or a kind of a covered entrance structure, which will be built on pylons, which, if I remember correctly, have to be, you know, they're very close to the leach field, so we'd be in conformance there. And then we have ten feet to be to a slab, I believe is the next step, and that's where the slab will be. And if you look at the footprint or the plans, the house is actually constructed of a half slab and a half-full foundation, and that's because of the requirements of the Department of Health.
So you, you think you won't have a problem because of the way you've constructed the, the deck by you putting in posts?
I don't believe so, sir. They gave me the requirements, and so, a one-second backstory is that the whole plan, the entire house had to be scrapped and redesigned to meet that conformity. So, other than the architect who wanted to flame me, the entire footprint, everything got reversed and redone because of that particular issue.
I got you, thank you so much.
Okay, I don't have any questions, but I will note for Attorney Crowell, I did correct it on here, and I initialated it.
Thank you.
Date it in the prior case, there was a minor correction on that plan. I did the same thing, just made the correction.
It's eight, it's number eight, right?
Greg, you don't have to resubmit the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got it.
Yeah, I think this meets the Gale case and the statute, the bylaw. I don't see any issue with this case. Even though I'm not voting.
Mr. Donahue?
I was just rather curious, the tree in the backyard, is it going to remain?
No, the tree in the back, well...
The one on the left rear, if you're looking at the building.
I had two trees taken down after the hurricane, or whatever, the tornadoes that came through. So the two big, are you talking about the big pine?
No, it's a big, I think it's an oak.
That's on the other gentleman's property.
Oh, that's on his property?
Yes.
You don't really care about that at all.
It's in the common area.
Okay.
We don't have lots. It's in the common, on his exclusive use area.
All right. No further questions.
Mr. Murphy?
I have no questions. It looks like it'll nicely upgrade the area, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I agree, no questions.
Thank you.
Was this originally like a religious camp? Was it part of the, involved with the Baptist Church?
I don't, I don't have any knowledge about that. I've never heard that, no. No, I think it was just an owner had this piece of property, made, built cottages and rented them back in the forties and fifties.
I also had some trouble getting to, I eventually got there, but I sat in the parking lot of that large white building behind the Baptist Church for a little bit, as I sat there. What was that?
Oh, that was you!
Oh, that was a wrecked building. Right, okay.
That's the old schoolhouse. West Howard Schoolhouse. The town's been fighting over that for, debating what to do over that for ten, fifteen years now. As it obsolesces.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak for or against this application? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. Any discussion by the board on this application? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the board hereby approves for case two zero one nine dash eighty-five dash thirty-five, rather. Patrick and Catherine Patracca have, have applied for, and we hereby approve a special permit to demolish and replace an existing, non-conforming, single-family residential condominium. The application was pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, three twenty-five, fifty-four, table two. Area regulation is set forth in MGL, chapter forty-eight, section six. The property is located at eight Bell's Neck Road, map ten, partial F one dash eight in the RM zoning district. And this application was approved because the, all the seminal, all the submitted documents for the planned alteration or reconstruction for a non-con, non-conforming, single-family residential structure meets the requirements and in accordance with the Gale case, and then there is no, no, no new non-conformity, and there will be no new resulting substantial or detrimental detriment to the neighborhood. I guess this is in a location, we're going to need, we're going to need to make sure that the, because the property is so close in a residential area that any demolition or external substantial reconstruction or substantial landscaping will, cannot be done during the period thirty June twenty twenty through Labor Day twenty twenty or the same period twenty twenty-one.
Second on the motion, please. Wait, are you voting?
Oh, I'm not voting.
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Hilliard. Any discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. Permit granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, board, appreciate it. Best of luck. Just one, one note, we said not to speak, but...
You got it, you got it.
Most friendly town I've ever, you know, I put it my own way fifteen years ago. They put me, I think I lost five years age. This individual here and other people in the building, they're just amazing to work with. They're very supportive and very helpful.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Joyous retirement.
Yeah, I will, two years away.
Come before you know it.
Sheila, is he your uncle? That you've mentioned? Bob's your uncle! Just asking.
However, my cousin's husband...
Yes.
And our next applicant's...
Attorney, are those yours, things down below?
Some of them, yes.
Yeah, he's moving in.
Would you like the plans?
He's in the National Guard. He hates it when people say thank you for their service. And he says he's especially...
I have great respect for people. Doesn't matter where they serve.
There were many sheets, I think there were only two or three sheets. Is it right there on top, Sheila, let's see?
Well, he's not that bad guy.
Is that the first case at all?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hederstadt?
Uh, the board hereby wants to review case two zero one nine dash thirty-six. Sally Jay...
Peeny.
Penny?
It's Peeny. It's Italian.
Peeny.
Peeny, okay. Through her agent, a William Crowell. I get him every time. Has applied for a special permit or in the alternative of variance to construct a dormer over the garage, creating a habitable space on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, three twenty-five, fifty-four, table two. Area regulation is set forth in MGL forty-eight, section six, and if necessary, chapter forty-eight, section ten. Property is located at four Checkleberry Lane, map four, partial W one dash thirty-seven in the RH one zoning district. And the only comment we have is from the Health Department, when there were no issues.
Okay, I guess voting on this case, we'll have Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstadt, Mr. Donahue, and I guess Mr. Kapoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Port, and I have Sally Peeny seated next to me, her husband Tony is in the audience. And they are seeking to construct a dormer over the garage at the property located at four Checkleberry Lane in West Howard, which is a little bit south of Lower County Road. Just to orient you a little bit, and the dormer will create, as we had in the first case, additional habitable space within the required setback. They're not changing the footprint of the dwelling at all. They have a garage, they're putting a second, a dormer on the garage and creating a master bedroom over the garage, so that's the new habitable space. So that gets it within the eleven-foot setback on the northwest corner of the dwelling, as shown on the plan. We submitted building and elevation plans to help you visualize what the proposed project will entail. Also, the denial letter from the building commissioner, who said that we do not meet the setback requirements. As I said, we're eleven point zero and ten point nine from the westerly boundary. So we're at a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling that meets the requirements of the Gale case, because we're intensifying the existing non-conformity by creating habitable space over the garage within the twenty-foot setback. And that requires a special permit by this board, and we would argue that the proposed project would not create a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and ask that you grant the relief requested this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard?
I have no questions.
Ms. Muller?
I have no questions.
Mr. Hederstadt?
No questions.
Okay, just on the existing condition plot plan, it looks like from the elevation drawings, the dormer's going on the north side?
Yes.
Okay. How far back does it come? I see, see where the eleven foot is there at the end of the house on your plan?
Staying within the confines of that footprint. Just going to be on the second floor.
Is it coming all the way back to the end of the house, though? The other side of the house, or does the roof, it looks like the roof comes down?
It's set back a bit, according to the plans, but not much. There's a big overhang for a gutter on the first floor and the second floor.
Okay. Okay, no further questions. I think it meets the Gale case and the bylaw. Mr. Donahue?
It's a full shed dormer that's going up there?
Think you would call it that?
Okay, so it's going to be a nice sized room.
So they'll be able to walk, it's not a...
Right.
Store things, it's going to be part of the master bedroom, so they can stand up.
Just out of curiosity, the total number of bedrooms for the home is four?
You're just expanding the master bedroom.
Okay.
No further questions. Mr. Murphy?
No questions.
Mr. Armstrong?
No questions.
Mr. Kapoli?
One question from my, my own education. On the, on the application, it says frontage one forty-four point five four plus ninety-two point three two. Is that just because of the, how the lot is on the, both of these roads here? Is that where those two numbers are coming from?
That can, it can be confusing, because what's shown as the way on that plan was appended to the existing lot. They divided up the way, discontinued the way and gave half the way to one lot and half the way to the other lot. So it was very difficult to figure out how far the existing dwelling was back from the original lot line or from the new lot line created by adding, appending that way. Either way, it was more than twenty-five feet.
Yes, I was just wondering for my own... Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this case? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Second.
I think Ms. Muller, did you move? Ms. Muller, in two seconds, Mr. Donahue?
Yep, that sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing closed. I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Sir, the motion is case two zero one nine dash thirty-six. The board hereby approves the application for a special permit as submitted by Sally Jan, Jane Penet, Peney to construct a dormer over the garage, creating a habitable space on a pre-existing, non-conforming single-family dwelling. non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, three twenty-five fifty-four, Table Two. Area regulation, MGL forty-eight, Section Six. The property is located at four Checkleberry Lane, map four, partial W one dash thirty-seven in the RH one zoning district. And the variance has been... The variance. The special permit has been granted based upon the application's submitted documentation, planned addition of a dormer over an existing garage, and that it is pursuant in accordance with the Gale case, and there's no new conformity, nonconformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Is there a problem with the location?
I think so.
Big, is it major construction for dormer?
It's going to be some construction renovating that top floor, but it's all gonna be interior, basically, not demolishing, adding a dormer on the back.
How much traffic is the issue? Is that gonna create on that tight little street?
No cement trucks coming in to pour foundations. No dump trucks coming in to dump fill, take away fill. You got some carpenters coming in, electricians, tradesmen, not all at the same time. You can't get everybody there at the same time.
It's kind of an out-of-way street, so I could go either way. It's tight, but it is off the beaten track, sort of, so probably not a lot of through traffic.
I don't see the need for it. I thought of it.
Okay.
Done.
Okay, so that's the end of the motion, then. Could I have a second on it, please?
Second.
Mr. Hilliard, any discussion on the motion by the Board? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, it's tight down there. It's sort of out of the way, so I don't...
Yeah, and it's just a dormer. They're not gonna do any... They're not tearing down and rebuilding.
Because there's some more questions.
He's gonna be... I'm gonna ask him a million and one questions, but I think...
But it was pretty...
The definition's a lot.
No.
Okay. Mr. Hederstadt, you can call our last case, if you would, please.
Okay, the last case before the Board. Case two zero one nine dash thirty-seven. Derek and Scott Wellfeld. As well as Kim Welch, trustee through their agent, Attorney William Crowe, have applied for a variance from the requirements of a lot in the bylaws and to combine portions of two lots to allow for sufficient continuous upland to build a fifth apartment where four currently exist. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, three twenty-five dash two, definition of a lot, and three twenty-five dash fifty-one M, mixed-use development as set forth in MGL forty-eight, Section Ten. The properties are located at four thirty-two Route twenty-eight, map thirteen, partial E four in the CH dash one zoning district, and fifteen Doane, Doane Road, map thirteen, partial E three dash one in the RH zoning district. There are three comments in writing, which will be discussed, one from the Health Department, one from the Town Planner, and one from the Conservation Commission.
Okay, voting on the case, we're gonna have our five regular members, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstadt, me, and Mr. Donahue. Attorney Crowe, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please. We do know you and your real name. Standings, some contrary information from time to time. And introduce also who's with you, please, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowe from Howard's Port. And it is Doane Road, an old Cape Cod name. It's fifteen Doane Road is what the application is for, as well as Route twenty-eight. This is Paul Vassal, seated to my right. He is under contract to purchase both of the parcels in question, what we'll call the Wolfel Building at four thirty-two Main Street, and then the burned-out house on fifteen Doane Road. He submitted a copy of the assessors' map, and I outlined in yellow the parcel in question. It actually does not include the... My mistake. It does not include the upper right-hand quadrant.
I don't know what that means.
So I'm gonna show you on the... On this map. This piece here is not included. Do not own that. So this piece here...
You do not own it?
Do not own it.
And you don't intend it to become part of your lot?
It's not gonna be part of...
So it's just an X to it?
Right.
Ignore it. Okay.
That is part of the Doane Road lot.
Correct.
And that is, what are we calling that? Lot E three B?
So the Wolfel lot is this piece here, right?
Right.
The Doane Road lot is all of this.
Yes.
All of this, including...
Okay.
That piece.
But...
My mistake. This is part of the Doane Road lot.
Okay, so we're not Xing that up?
We're not Xing that up.
So the entire parcel in front of us, prospectively, will be the parcel if there's a purchase. Is that correct?
That remains to be seen because we're proposing to divide the... Redivide that.
I understand.
Okay. Yes, that whole, and that's why on the assessors' map...
Yeah.
Why it's submitted that way.
So that's the subject of the petition, is this entire lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a clean one of that, Attorney? Do you have a clean copy of this one? Did I just mine out?
I have it.
Oh, you can have mine. Want to come down to me? Thank you. My apologies. No, it's okay. I have the same issue. I've been looking at the assessors' map and looking if it would just act out and try and get there. Thank you.
Now... I'm sure this... I imagine this petition was maybe why there's a full Board here this evening, eight members that are waiting for the main event.
No, not really.
Okay.
We just... It's been our practice to have all of our available alternates. Mr. Murphy just joined us recently, so we're all here, and...
That's great.
It seems to have worked fine. I was a little concerned if it would be too unwieldy, but it's working great, so that way they get used to the cases, they can step in if there's a continuance. But I think it's a good thing.
I fed them candy first.
But it's not really focused on this case, just part of our regular procedure.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'd like to preface my remarks on this case by saying that I'm hoping that the Boards of the town can work with us on this project and think outside the box a little bit. It's not your ordinary petition, and we're hoping that you... All of the Boards involved can look at the overall picture of what we're trying to accomplish here. You have fifteen Doane Road, an existing burned-out house. It's been there for years. It's an eyesore. Who knows what's going into the marsh and into the water table from that house obsolescing? I don't see that changing anytime in the near future if Mr. Vassal doesn't buy this, because I don't know who would buy it. It's been sitting there. The owners have not sold it. The previous owners, and I'm dating myself, were... Was Herbert Rowley. And his father, Dr. Rowley, owned the house across from the Dairy Queen, where the condominium project is, the big house. That was Dr. Rowley's house. He brought all five of myself and my four siblings into the world, and he parceled this off in the early eighties. I did it for him, and he parceled that lot off to Herb Rowley and his wife, and then they both died. And it was in a trust, and now it's just sitting there. Nothing's happening. So I don't see a bright future for that lot if Mr. Vassal doesn't buy it. At the same time, the Wolfels, the two brothers, Scott and Derek, have been trying to sell the Wolfel Building for a number of years. You've probably seen a for sale sign out there for a while, and have had some difficulty selling it. And Mr. Vassal would like to buy it, but he and I talked, and he wasn't seeing a future for that if... He didn't think it was viable if he couldn't get five apartments out of it as opposed to four. So we were just scheming one day last spring, summer, and he was saying he needed five, and he wished he had fifty thousand square feet of upland. And he's only got... The Wolfel Building only has forty-five thousand four hundred square feet of upland. So I said, well, why don't you buy the burned-out building and bring that back, build a new house on it, and take some of that upland and apply it towards the Wolfel lot? And come out and get your fifty thousand square feet, have five rentable units, and get rid of that burned-out eyesore on Doane Road. It seems to me everybody wins. So that was the idea, and thus this petition. So we talked with Dan Croto from Moran Engineering, who is here this evening, and the other gentlemen, the broker involved, Brad Kurtz. And Dan came up with this plan so that we would have enough upland to meet the fifty thousand square foot requirement. What's that requirement? For a mixed-use development, which is part commercial, which the Wolfel Building is on the first floor. It was when it was Wolfel Plumbing and Heating. They had a showroom there and all of that. So it's designed and has been used in the past as a commercial enterprise on the first floor, and you have to have thirty percent dedicated to commercial use. It has to be facing the street and has to be on the first floor. So it would meet that requirement. And then you can have residential units in the rest of the building. When the Wolfels designed it originally, I submitted the plans from a while back by Thomas Moore, and there's... It shows a buildout of five units, but you have to have, under the mixed-use development bylaw, you have to have ten thousand square feet of lot area per residential unit. So what I'm gonna try to do tonight is just so that I can follow it and understand it is to keep it simple. There are a hundred issues going on here, and I'm sure every Board and every one of you on this Board has your opinion, has your questions that could get us away from the central point. And the central request that we want to make is for a variance from this board, not a special permit, a variance from the fifty thousand square foot requirement for a mixed-use development for this property. And so we... So just hear me out, if you would. If we were... If we didn't have the lot next door, we'd be here saying, we only have forty-five thousand four hundred square feet. We would like a variance of whatever the difference between that and fifty thousand is forty-six hundred square feet. We want a variance. And so, well, I don't know if this Board would see their way to granting that under the requirements of the variance statute. So why don't we get some other land? And this is a great idea, but there happens to be a stream that goes through the property. But that's pretty unique, too. That's a unique soil condition and photography. So the idea is that we could take this piece here on the corner of twenty-eight and Doane Road. That would not be built upon, could not be built upon in the future because it's used towards the computation of the fifty thousand square feet, if you want to look at it that way. But I think the simplest way to look at it is we need a variance. We're requesting a variance from the area requirement and from the contiguous upland requirement. But the net... End result would be we'd have forty-five thousand four hundred square feet on the Wolfel lot plus thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet from the Doane Road lot at the corner, and reconfigure these lots according to the yellow line that I've drawn here. So that... This lot would have forty thousand square feet of upland for a buildable lot for a new house where the burned-out house is. And then below the yellow line here would be the Wolfel lot plus the thirteen thousand square feet of upland at the corner that would be treated as one. We'd go in to the Planning Board with an ANR plan, Approval Not Required Plan, if the Board sees their way to granting the variance this evening, and have that plan endorsed by the Planning Board. So that would reconfigure the two lots in question so that we'd be able to grab that upland for our computation. Technically, you'd still be granting a variance, as I see it, from the fifty thousand square foot area requirement where we only have forty-five thousand four hundred, but you could put a condition on it that we have to reconfigure the lot to include the thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet from the Doane Road lot to create a new lot. So I'm trying to keep it within the concept of a traditional area variance from this Board and a variance from... Pursuant to the Building Commissioner's denial letter, a variance from the contiguous upland definition of lot in the bylaw and in the mixed-use development portion of the bylaw, which is three twenty-five fifty-one M, as in Mary. I'm sorry, could you say that last part once again? We'd be requesting a variance from the fifty thousand square foot requirement of the mixed-use... I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. A variance from the area that we have on the Wolfel lot of forty-five thousand four hundred to allow for a five-unit... Five residential units in a mixed-use development.
And what about the upland?
And also a variance from the contiguous upland requirement on the definition of lot in our bylaw.
Okay. Thank you.
Two variances. I want to try to cut through all of the confusing part and get right to the heart of the matter and not try to split hairs over whether the bylaw says, you know, it says contiguous... it says contiguous upland in one place, but not in the mixed-use development definition. Don't want to get into all of that. And I know there was a concern of, where does, where would the board get this authority? Well, this board has the statutory authority from 48, Section 10, by the state statute, to grant variances from any part of the bylaw. And our bylaw also allows for this board to grant variances in Section 32549 and 32552. It says the, this board has the authority to grant variances. So it's not based on case law, it's based on the statute and the Howard's bylaw. So you have the flexibility, the authority, to do basically whatever you see fit to do under the circumstances if we, in your opinion, meet the conditions for a variance. So our argument is that owing to soil conditions and shape and topography, I mean, if you ever had a unique situation, this is pretty unique as far as topography and soil conditions with the stream running through the middle and the configuration of the lots, that affects especially this lot and not other lots generally in the same zoning district. That's one of the requirements of the, for variance. And that a literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. Well, we've got two lot owners, two property owners that are having difficulty selling their property. Financial hardship, the proposed buyer, financial hardship that he needs five units as opposed to four units in order to make the numbers work. And this board could grant desirable relief without a substantial detriment to the public good. I think the public would benefit by this. You have five additional rentable units.
Year-round.
Year-round, thank you, in town. You get rid of the eyesore. You have a nice new house there, it looks great, and no damage to the marsh from continued obsolescence and leakage into the marsh from the existing burned-out house. And you would not, there would be no substantial derogation from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The bylaw intends that you have 40,000 square feet for a buildable lot. We have that on Dome Road. Mr. Vassal has already been to the Conservation Commission, has an existing order of conditions from them. You have to file, when you file that, you also have to file notices with the state DEP. He has that, that's been approved. He has applied for a building permit. I talked to Ray Chesley, the building commissioner, and he said, Ray said he was just waiting on issuing a building permit to see what action this board takes. So I think that there would be no substantial derogation from the intent or purpose of the bylaw because we'd come out with a buildable lot and that meets the setbacks and the area requirements. So we don't need any relief from this board for that lot. And the mixed-use development with the variance, with the condition that we append the extra upland at the corner of Dome Road and Route 28 would, in effect, comply with the 50,000-square-foot requirement with no exterior changes to the Wolfel Lot. It's not like we're going to be building anything anywhere. It's interior in the, the Wolfel Building, it's already ready to go for five apartments. It has sufficient parking.
Fire egress.
And fire egress. So in a nutshell, I think that we have unique soil conditions that affect our lot and not generally lots in the same zoning district. We have a substantial hardship, both for the present owners and the prospective buyer. Desirable relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I think the public would be benefited both ways. And that there would be no substantial detriment or derogation from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. It allows for mixed-use development if you meet the standards. It allows for a lot to be built on if you meet the standards. So in my opinion, everybody wins. We got two lot owners that get to sell. We got a buyer who gets to buy and build a house and have five rentable year-round units. The eyesore goes away. No exterior changes to the Wolfel Building. And the burned-out lot, the house doesn't sit there forever and continue to contaminate the marsh. Now, from what I hear, if, let's just put it this way. If I were on the Select Board, I would be in favor of this. If I were on the Chamber of Commerce Board, I'd be in favor of this because it's going to benefit the town in so many ways. I know that the Conservation Commission and the Town Planner have concerns about floodplain zone. So let me just touch on those for a bit. And there's differences of opinion as to how that applies or not, all right? So again, trying to keep it simple, I'll point out that, as Mr. Crotto, the engineer, has said, it's not like you can't, cannot build if you're in a floodplain zone. We have a section of our bylaw that regulates development and building in the floodplain zone. Section 325104 tells you what you have to do if you want to build in the floodplain zone. So there's been some talk about whether the vacant lot on Dome Road, or the burned-out lot, I'm calling it, could be rebuilt. In our opinion, it can. I talked with Mr. Chesley, the building commissioner, and he said he is ready to issue, that he would issue the building permit. The Town Planner may disagree with that opinion, but it's really up to Mr. Chesley, the zoning enforcement agent, to interpret the requirements and interpret the bylaw. I also think that with regard to any issues concerning wetland here or floodplain or Rivers Act, anything like that, this is a zoning case. This board has the authority to issue a variance in a zoning case. Mr. Vassal has already obtained the approval of the Conservation Commission to replace that burned-out lot on Dome Road. So I'm anticipating, and I've had conversations with Ms. Greenhouse, the Town Planner, I've seen her review that she said she was going to submit to you folks. So we think that the lot on Dome Road that would be created by this reconfiguration would be a buildable lot as shown on the plan and as approved by the Conservation Commission. And I know Ms. Greenhouse wants more detail on the plan, and that's her job. She's a planner, she likes to see plans. What I've tried to do is present a petition conceptually that it, that we all can try to get our arms around and understand before we get lost in all the details. We could provide subsequently what she wants to see on a plan. So we're hoping that all of the boards, as I said at the outset, the Select Board, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Building Commissioner, Building Department, this board can all work with us to help do something down there that's going to help the town and the landowners involved so that everybody wins. I'd ask that you grant the variance as requested, variances to, as requested, thank you. Mr. Hilliard.
Mr. Crowe, if you ever run for Congress, who'd be the person they'd choose to filibuster? Thank you. My first question is, what is your definition of contiguous? In a few, just in a few short words.
Adjacent, side-by-side, no interruption.
That being the case, if if you were to own, let's say parenthetically, if you owned this lot in one name, what's on there now, and then you decided to tear everything down that's on that lot. So now you have a vacant lot of this size. In your opinion, would you be able to do what you want to do without having to come to us or go to the Planning Board, other than for site plan review?
No, because of the creek.
And tell me why the creek is the problem?
Because it interrupts the upland.
Okay, it interrupts it, but when you add up all the uplands on this lot, it comes to more than 50,000 square feet.
It does, but they're not contiguous. We tried everything.
No, no, I'm, I just want to make sure we get there the right way.
Yes, I understand, Mr. Hilliard.
So because you can't, because if this were a lot as it stands, and it has more than 50,000 square feet on the lot itself, all right, forget the contiguous part of it, then the reason you can't use it is because you have this little creek that runs through it and under the, what, oh, it runs through it, and under the terms of the bylaw, your opinion and the town's opinion so far has been that because it's not contiguous, you can't use it.
Correct.
You can't use the whole lot for your 50,000. And then we go back to the definition of lot.
Correct.
And the definition of lot was changed after this land came into being. So, all right, so now you go back and you buy the whole thing, and is the argument now whether or not, because that stream was always there, that you are now not, should not be affected by the new lot definition, or you are? You are saying that the town says you are affected by the lot definition, and it's not contiguous?
I'd argue that we were grandfathered if we owned it before the definition changed.
Okay, all right.
But we also want to end up with two structures, not just one.
I understand. But two structures combined would still meet the requirement for upland. In other words, you'd have your 50,000 square feet for your residences, and then you'd have your whatever you would need for the house. Is that correct?
If there were no creek there, or if the definition of lot was different, was the way it used to be.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So then you, what you have now with the so-called soil conditions, configuration of the lot, and so on and so forth. And what else is your argument as to why a variance, based on this particular lot, why a variance should be issued under the statute?
Because there's a hardship that arises from that uniqueness to the current owners and to the proposed buyer to have the structures that already exist, basically. The Wolfel Building that exists, and then the burned-out house that used to exist, that they want to replace.
And the derogation from the purpose of the bylaw itself, what is your argument as to why this does not derogate from the bylaw?
Because there was a house there. We're creating a lot to create, to build basically a single-family residence in the same footprint.
Okay.
And get rid of the, whatever damage that burned-out house is doing to the environment, to that lot and the water table. And we are, we would have five rentable year-round residential units in a mixed-use development.
But in reality, if you, if we granted you the variances you seek, in reality, this one lot would still have equal to or in excess of upland for five units plus a house. Forget the stream.
Yes.
In reality, you would still have it. So that isn't a derogation in sense from the bylaw because it keeps the same issue of upland. I'm not making your case, I'm trying to understand it better. It keeps the issue of upland still before us, the town in its definition wanting to make sure we had sufficient area, upland area, which is an unusual statute. A lot of towns, you can use a percentage of wetland. So the bottom line is, we would have exactly what the purpose of the bylaw is with or without the, without the stream.
Yes.
But all that stream does is it just enters something that doesn't make a lot of sense for us, basically.
I would, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Hilliard, thank you.
Okay, well, maybe you have one more question. Let me just, okay, that's it? Thank you so much.
Ms. Muller.
Attorney Crowe, you said, "In a nutshell," and I got lost somewhere in that nutshell. It was a big one, so I'm going to ask you some simple-minded questions because, okay. Why aren't you just asking for a variance based on this lot?
Because four out of five members would have to agree that we have a hardship and all the requirements of the variance. And I'm trying to increase that likelihood that you would grant the variance because I'm saying, "Well, we're going to dedicate 13,000, almost 14,000 square feet of upland."
Additional.
Additional.
But if all this did not exist, you would be coming to us just about this lot and asking for a variance?
Could try.
Okay.
Could try, but...
Second question is...
Thrilled about it.
Why divide it in this peculiar way? Why not just let the creek be the dividing line?
Well, because
It is, I think.
This here is all wetland.
Not that one.
This is all wetland.
That's all wetland, okay.
And it doesn't belong to this lot.
It belongs to 15 Dome Road?
Yes.
Okay. But you still have 50,000 square feet plus a house lot?
Yes.
If you own the whole thing.
If you own the whole thing.
So you meet, okay, all right.
And that's what Mr. Vassal's proposing to do, is own the whole thing.
But then to subdivide it?
Correct, in order to ensure that this upland benefits this lot and is never built upon.
Okay. I noticed when you spoke about five apartments here, and I'm with, I'm actually with you in concept on all this, but legalities are confounding to me. You never mentioned the word affordable housing to describe those apartments. Was that deliberate?
Yes.
So you're going to have costly rental housing over...
Market rate rentals.
Market rate, okay, thank you.
I don't think Mr. Vassal will have the same situation as you might see maybe in downtown Howard's Court.
If I may add, a comment on that. The whole reason I'm getting into year-round housing, if you will, is because I have a number of summer homes here that I've bought and renovated. I guess you would call them high-end summer rentals. And in the wintertime, some of my properties divide into multiple houses. So if you have, for instance, 620 Route 28, where it had three kitchens when I bought it, and you could close the house down into two apartments, and then there was a cottage and a swimming pool. So in the summertime, one big family would rent for a week at a time with 20 relatives, right, for reunion. But in the winter, it turned into three units. So years ago, I started, on Craigslist, advertising 10-month seasonal rentals. And the volume of calls was fantastic. I'm always full in the winter. I know some people are kind of afraid of that, they don't want to do seasonal rentals. I've always done it, it's always worked out great. But every single person asked me, "Can I rent it year-round at that, at that market price?" And the answer is, you know, unless you're willing to pay, you know, exorbitant in the summertime, you know, per week, obviously it doesn't work.
Right.
And when I saw this building and went through it, I was like, this is an easy one if we can get it done because, you know, everyone wants year-round housing here. And that's decent, that's not, you know, 500 square feet. I mean, these are, these are large apartments. I mean, Mr. Wolfel built a huge building there, which is unfortunately largely empty.
Thank you.
Mr. Hutterstedt.
You are, on Dome Road, you already have a 40,000-square-foot upland buildable lot for the house that's been burnt, and you can rebuild that without a problem, correct? Could you do that today if you wanted to? If you wanted to recon, if you wanted to rebuild that, you... If you wanted to recon, if you wanted to rebuild that, you could do it. You've got 40,000 square feet.
Yes.
You're all set. Okay, for the existing building down here on the bottom right-hand side, which is number 432 Route 28, you can't add to it, because you don't have upland. So what you're doing is you're taking, that 40,000-square-foot I mentioned does not include another 13,000 square feet down here, correct?
Yes.
Who owns that?
Right now, all of this is owned by 15 Dome Road, where the burned-out house is, all of it.
All of it?
4.6 acres.
Forty thou, uh, 200 square feet? 200,000 square feet?
That lot, yes.
He owns everything, except, does he own 432?
No.
He doesn't own that. And so the dividing line for that is like this line that has 144.81 on the top.
Correct.
Okay, so which I've drawn some slash lines.
And the stream.
That, this, and this down here belongs to?
Dome Road.
Dome Road.
Yeah, yes.
And so what you're trying to do is you say, okay, I want to, I want to buy this, I want to buy all this, but I want to give it 13,000 of it to this.
Yes.
Okay?
Exactly.
And so this one, this lot, this buildable lot, instead of being 200 square feet, 200,000 square feet, is something less than that, and it excludes 13,000, and you want the 13 to go to here.
Yes.
And the reason you can't do that is because it's not contiguous.
Yes.
Okay, now, what is the dividing line in the lots between Lot E3B and the 45,000-square-foot 432? Is it the creek?
Yes.
So the creek happens to be a lot line?
Happens to be, the middle of the creek, center of the creek is the lot.
Is the lot line?
Yes.
Okay. So you're, so what you're doing is, you're dividing an existing lot.
Yes.
And therefore, you need a variance. Why?
Because we need, under the mixed-use development bylaw, we need 10,000 square feet of area contiguous upland per residential unit, and we want five units, five times 10,000 is 50,000, so we're short by 4,600 square feet on the Wolfel lot.
Just because there's a creek there?
Yes.
Otherwise, if there's no creek, you wouldn't need us.
Correct. That's why we're asking for variance regarding contiguous upland.
Does Zone CH1 versus Zone RM make a difference to you?
No.
It does not impact this whatsoever? Okay. So. From the town's standpoint of view, and from, maybe from my standpoint of view, what you're doing is you're creating an opportunity for the town to gain, if you will, taxable income, or taxes on a buildable lot that you've already got, that's got 40,000 square feet in it. If you, if you limit it to just, I don't know if it's E3B, I don't know what it would be. Is it just 40,000 square feet even all, if you go just, I don't know where you draw the line, would you draw the center line of the creek, again, all the way up the top, or it doesn't include this or does? Anyway, forget it, don't, don't answer. E, Lot 3B, E3B, would be 40,000 square feet of buildable lot. You could build there, right? And you'd have no problem with that, you could do it.
Right, right.
And so what you need from us is a variance to authorize to take the 13,000-square-foot portion of the old Lot E3B, which was grandfathered, by the way, I assume, all the way down, including the 13,000 square feet, and you want us to authorize that 13.9 square feet to be part of, of the 45,000-square-foot existing buildable lot, therefore giving you authorization, which you'd go a different route to make it five.
Yes.
Five, that's all.
Yes.
No two variants, just, just one?
Well, variance from the contiguous upland requirement, and, and I, I think it's easier to look at this and say, you could grant a variance for the Wolfel lot of 4,600 square feet from the 50,000-square-foot requirement, but put a condition on it that we have to reconfigure the lot to include the 13,975. I thought it was simp, it puts it more in what you traditionally grant as a variance is from the area requirement.
Oh, I see, you're going back to this 45,000 square feet, you're granting that particular lot a variance by acquiring 13,000 more feet, and therefore going from four to five, four to five.
Yes.
But it's still one variance.
You can look at it that way.
And now, talk to me again about, as far as you're concerned, and as far as what I've read, the, you don't have a problem in either case by the Conservation Commission. This is upland and, and water, you know, and I've been over there, I've seen it, you know, I know what working with this stuff is. It's a real pain, but they agree with you that you can rebuild that, and that the 13,000 square foot down there is still what it is. And that's buildable if you could get 40,000, but you can't do it, so adding it to the 13, to the 45 is not a problem for, for conservation standpoint of view.
I can't answer, I can't answer for the Conservation Commission or the Conservation Agent. She struggles with her, the issues, but they've approved and issued an order of conditions.
Right, she's approved it. What is the other problem, you think? If the town says you're getting, you're getting, you're building, you're redoing the house, you're getting taxable property now, and you're making five rentable properties, and you're getting taxable income that, and you're using this, and you're not disturbing any of the wetland, what's the issue?
I don't see one.
Thank you.
Okay, under the definition of lot, the term upland shall mean any land area not subject to the provisions of the Protection Act, MGL Section 131, Section 40, and I looked that up, and it says the term coastal wetlands, as used in this section of the, Section 40, shall mean any bank, mark, swamp, meadow, flat, or other lowland subject to title action or coastal storm flowage. And it seems to me, since it's in the FEMA map, it's not uplands. Got a question or?
It's a statement.
Okay.
So I'd like to hear your response.
Okay.
That's just the way I read it.
I understand.
And apparently our town planner reads it that way, too.
I know she does. So again, if that's the case, why would we have as part of our bylaw, this whole section that says this is, if you're going to build in the floodplain zone, this is how you do it? Why would we have that? Number one. Number two, as far as I'm concerned, if you look at any lot that comes before the Conservation Commission, just as we've done here, Mr. Crotto from Moran Engineering shows edge of wetland. As far as I'm concerned, you need to draw a distinction between, let's call it, dry wetland, dry upland and wet upland, okay? When houses, when, when applications for building permits come before the Conservation Commission, there's a 50-foot now, let's just call it a 50-foot no-build zone from the edge of the wetland, you can't build in the first 50 feet, and then the next 50 feet, 50 to 100, is where they have jurisdiction to regulate your building, all right? So if that were the case, that you can't build in any wetland, any, any property that's subject to the jurisdiction or is subject to the Wetlands Protection Act, you couldn't build in that 50 to 100-foot zone, all right? So I, I've met previously with Ray Chesley, the Building Commissioner, and with Representative from the, Amy's Assistant at the Conservation Commission, and what Ray said was that he does not calculate, in terms of calculating the buildable upland for a lot, he does not take into work, he does not, it does not matter to him whether that's in the floodplain zone or not, okay? And the Conservation Agent said, Assistant said that not all property that's in a floodplain zone is wetland.
Okay, I'm just reading the statute.
I, I, I understand, if, but it seems illogical to me to say everything that's in the floodplain zone is not countable upland. There are many, many properties throughout Howard in subdivisions that have been built upon on the basis that, in reality, you do use that property, that upland, to calculate your buildable upland. And pending petitions of, for building permits are dependent on that. So actual practice is that it's calculated.
The town has a, has the right to do what they did, which is move, which is move it from 100 feet to 50 feet, they've done that.
Dean, they might or might not. I'm just looking at the bylaw definition.
I understand.
One of my concerns is, it's, I don't think it's just as simple as a variance. Really, what's being asked for is to amend the bylaw, we, we don't have the power to do that.
You have the power to vary the bylaw, not amend it, but you have the power to vary it.
Mr. Chairman, what?
I don't know how you would vary this when it has.
If the question, if the request is for variance from area, just a variance from area, if we put it in its simplest terms, someone comes in and says, I have a 39,000-square-foot lot, and I want to build a house in an area where it's required for 40,000. And because of either the configuration of the lot or whatever happened pre, the argument is that it doesn't derogate from the bylaw, it's rocky, it's hilly, it's whatever it may be. The question is, do we have the legal authority to grant a variance to reduce the size of an area from 40,000 to 39? I mean, I think that is the question.
Okay, I don't think that's a good analogy, though.
Well, let's take any analogy.
Because here, the whole, the entire piece is in the wetlands. So if you look at it, there's no uplands.
The entire piece is in the wetlands, which.
Well, it's in the floodplain, and the way I read MGL.
Oh, you're, okay.
Section 131, that means it's all within the provisions of the Wetland Protection Act.
Right.
So you'd have to basically throw out the definition.
If that was the case, you couldn't be building on that burnt-out lot.
So.
But they are, but they are, because, because the town has the right to change what they have done, they've changed it, the part of the town in the conservation rules and regulations of the town set forth that, have set forth it 50 and 100 feet. If you're between 50 and 100, you can build, and they give, then there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of mitigations that the Conservation Commission has the right to provide, but anything between 50 and zero, you can't touch it, it's no build.
But they're not interpreting the bylaw, we are.
Yeah, we are.
We are, not the Conservation, whatever they're doing, they're doing, whether it's.
But you have a structure right now, the Wolfel residential, not residential, commercial building. And that's sitting there as a pre-existing non-conforming structure because of the wetland issue?
I don't know.
No, no, but let's, let's take it as the fact that it's, it's in the water, that's in the flood area. We have a building that's there, so they could come before us, let's assume this was never the issue, they could come before us and say, we want to renovate this building, and because it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, regardless of sitting in the wetlands or not, it's existed, and we want to renovate it. Wouldn't that be a special permit?
Well, I don't know, because what they're want to do is.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I mean, forget what they want to do.
Stick to what they're doing, they want to create a new lot. And it says, for purpose of the bylaw, any lot hereafter laid out, which is what they want to do, to be buildable, must contain the contiguous upland of 100% requirement, and then upland shall mean any land not subject to the Wetlands Protection Area.
Okay. The, I'm not trying to make the argument for, I'm.
It's grandfathered, it might be grandfathered as it is today, but they want to create a new lot, which I think has to meet the definition.
So if we, if we then require that it meets the Wetland Protection Act, then based on what you're saying, I don't mean you're making the argument based on what you read, then there is, you can't build anything on that property. That entire piece, that 200,000 square foot plus the Wolfel building, you can't do anything with unless you do what's currently existing.
Well, the existing house might be grandfathered.
Okay.
Because that's under the existing lot, not a new lot. And the existing Wolfel building is there.
That would be grandfathered.
So that would be grandfathered.
Right.
So they're all grandfathered, so what's the problem?
If they wanted to, you know, renovate, I suppose they might qualify for a special.
Special permit, and to extend.
Wait, wait a minute, Dean, I'm talking, I'm talking. What they want to do is reconfigure a new lot, and I think that's what gives me the issue of triggering the definition of lot.
But let's say the reconfiguring a new lot is only for the purposes of having enough upland for the renovation or the reconfiguration of the building. So, okay, so if you're with me on that for a second, then they have, they want to add one additional unit to what they can do as a matter of right. That's an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. So why couldn't they extend that structure to the extent to which they could add one more unit in there as a pre-existing non-conforming under the fact that it is grandfathered?
They might not.
And that we have to give them, no, we, either we have to give them a variance for the, for the, the amount of square footings they need, or give a special permit. It seems to me that is a way.
Maybe. I, I also have an issue, I don't think they've met the requirement for hardship, okay? They've, they've got the right to rebuild the existing house, so they've got an economic use. The existing building.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that we do.
Attorney Kroll, the existing building has two apartments in it already.
Okay.
Hardship does not mean they make, you know.
You know, I know.
Any amount of money, it's got to be a detriment, and they both seem to me to have economic viability as is, whether we grant a variance or not. So I don't, I don't see the hardship being met either.
Okay, just playing devil's advocate on hardships, from a, a commercial developer's point of view, when you add up the cost of what you're buying, and the cost of construction, and so on and so forth, the only way it makes sense is what you, what your results are. If you have X amount, if you're building residential units. So if, if you can only build five, and it takes six to make the difference, the hardship, it isn't a hardship that they're saying, you know, poor us, we can't do this, it's a hardship that basically says, I can't do it if I don't get this relief. It's that hardship relief.
But it doesn't mean they can't sell it to someone else who has a different plan in mind. Remember, it was going to be a toy museum, and that fell through. I'm sorry, Attorney Kroll, you were going to.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt. The house burned down quite a while ago, and I believe our demolition bylaw says that you lose your, any ability to rebuild grandfathered after two years. It's been more than two years.
Okay, you told us you had the right to rebuild it at the beginning of your presentation.
I did not say that.
Excuse me, but it went before the Conservation Committee, right? And then they approved it?
They approved it.
Right.
Right. They said, we meet the requirements, 40,000 square feet, and we meet the setbacks. But the hardship would be if the town took a position that you cannot rebuild that house.
Okay, that's anticipatory, we, we don't know what the town might say.
Mr. Chesley had indicated to me that he was ready to issue the permit, depending on the results of this petition this evening.
Right, but we're positing that we don't approve it, and we don't know what's going to happen, so, I mean, you can't convince me, I mean, we can.
I, I, I assume that, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I assume that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So I'm assuming one negative vote.
Well, we haven't heard from Mr. Donahue yet.
Well, I understand, I'm assuming at least one negative vote, okay? I would just take this moment to appeal again to the sense of, do you really want to do that? Turn this project down and not have five rentable units and not have a nice new house on Doane Road? Do you really want to do that? Or do you really want to find a way to approve this? That's, the province of this board is to vary the requirements of the bylaw, to vary it. So if the definition says, read however you want to read it, number one, first, I would say, that's a conservation issue, that's not the authority of this board to determine whether it's necessarily wetland or not. But if the board wanted to vary that provision of the bylaw, you have the authority to do that. That's your job. If you look at the equities of the situation and you look at the requirements of the statute and decide, yes, this makes sense, that's why we have this board, is to vary the requirements of the bylaw, to meet the exigencies, the necessities of the situation. That's our argument.
Okay, I understand. I don't think you meet the statutory requirements. Mr. Donahue.
As I read this map, the wetlands exist through the current property at fifteen Doane Road. Do you have anything that says Mr. Chesney would in fact validate another property, as you just described, being over two years? This property has not been touched in many years. Do you feel confident that he would allow a sign-off on this property being replaced at fifteen Doane Road? Because it's in...
I believe Mr. Vassal's had several conversations with him. I've had a couple of conversations with him, including this morning, and he said he's ready to issue the permit. And I think the confidence stems from that lot would have forty thou, over forty thousand square feet, it would be, the house would be more than twenty-five feet from the lot line, from the...
That's right.
Street, and more than twenty feet from the lot lines. It would meet the zoning requirements for a buildable lot.
See, that whole area of Harwich isn't a floodplain. Good portion of all those buildings down there are. The map indicates that that thirteen thousand square feet plus is upland. That's how it's defined, at least on the map in front of me.
Mm-hmm.
The floodplain does in fact appear as though it goes that entire length from Zone X, which would be, I think, on the north side, to that Zone X unshaded, which is the south side.
That's, if I may, Mr. Donahue, that's why, the distinction I suggested earlier between wet upland and dry upland, this would be wet upland, but calc, could be calculable and buildable.
But it's still, it's still, it's still reported as being an upland, according to the map anyway. Okay, I have another first question.
Mr. Chairman.
Murphy. Why don't we go through and then...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were finished. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we still have three more. Please give everybody one shot, Mr. Murphy.
You have, obviously you had the problem of non-contiguous because of the creek on, and I think there may have been answers, just to clarify, this whole area over here is considered wetland, the northeast corner?
Yes, yes.
So you couldn't just take a chunk of that?
No.
Which obviously would have been the simplest...
It would have been so easy.
But if you look at a map, it's just, it's, is, it doesn't look like a marsh or anything. It's trees and all that, right? But it's considered wetland?
There is upland there, but it's not, it's up in the corner and just...
There's too much wetland intervening.
Correct. Okay.
Mr. Armstrong. Just a statement, I would urge the board not to accept this. I don't think they've met the standard. And I think the, the fact that what you're looking at is changing the configuration of, making it a new lot, then you start from scratch at that point. And whether or not that would apply, I don't think it does. I think the language that is in the current bylaw is important and relevant, contiguous, contiguous upland and the definition of lot. I also think they have not addressed the concerns of the town planner, who has six, seven, eight points, nor do I think they've shown a hardship, so I would encourage you not to vote in favor of it.
Mr. Capoli.
I'm in favor of it. Let me ask you a question, I apologize if it's been asked in another way, but if you were to rebuild as step one, the burnt-out house, and then keep forty thousand square feet on that lot, would you then be able to sell the rest of that lot to the owners of four thirty-two Route twenty-eight? What would be stopping you from selling everything over the required amount of the lot to, to another owner, if anything?
Not quite sure I understand the question, because we, we are appending through fourteen-thousand square feet to the Wolfville lot.
So I'm, so if you, if you take the building on Doane Road, and then you were to rebuild it...
Right.
Okay, and then just draw two straight lines for, you know, from, from, what is this, nineteen Doane, you know, and then around the back and to, back again to, to Doane? Because you need forty thousand square feet?
Just carve that out.
Just carve that out.
Yes.
Would there be anything stopping you from selling the remainder of the lot of fifteen Doane to any buyer, but probably particularly the owner of four thirty-two Main Street?
I don't think there would be enough, you could, but there's, it wouldn't be a buildable lot.
No, I understand that, but if, so if you did that...
And basically donated everything to the Wolfville lot, except for the forty thousand square feet that we've seen.
Yep, so you rebuild, you, you carve out forty thousand square feet, and then you sell for a dollar or, you know, whatever you want to do, to any owner, probably four thirty-two. Then they have this one lot, then you join the lots together, and then you have this very large lot, would it be probably about four point something acres? And then you could come back to the board and say, "Hey, look, we own this amount of land, we have so much of it is upland, but it's not contiguous due to the unique nature, topography, et cetera, of the land, which is this river." I'm just...
So you've changed the configuration of the lot, you carve out the forty thousand square feet, you've changed the configuration, and you still have the creek.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so you, okay, so now we're, we're taking the fifteen Doane Road and that, that forty thousand out, and we're assuming that all the rest is now in one lot. So you've got your, your four thirty-two, all this land, you've got enough upland, but it's not contiguous because of the stream. So the stream is now your unique topographical handicap, which...
Don't we have that now with what we're proposing?
I, I, I think you do. I can, I would vote, vote for it, but I would offer that as a potential second...
Mr. Capoli, are you suggesting, rather than doing it simultaneously, doing it step one and step two in effect?
If the rest of the board was not in favor of doing it, the way that Mr. Kroll is stating, again, I, I'm in favor of going forward per Mr. Kroll's proposal. Maybe it's a silly analogy, but I, I think of the, the rule against perpetuities, you know, there's, there's a reason we have such a silly, long-winded rule, it's because we don't want land to lie, you know, unfertile. We want it to be used not only for the owner's benefit, but for the benefit of society in general, and society in general in this case is the town of Harwich. You know, it's taxable property, so that's my piece, thank you.
Well, the existing building is being used, there are two apartments in it.
Well, I know, I, I just, it's not, it's not to its best use.
That's part of my point, Mr. Donahue.
If I may, address the issue of watershed, wetlands, and everything else. I don't believe that's our issue. I don't believe that's before us, nor do we have any authority to say yes, no, or maybe. It's been represented to us that they've been before conservation. Conservation's job is if, even if we approve something, conservation can look at it and say, "No, you're within a hundred feet, or you're within fifty feet, and you can't do it." So...
Can I ask one question, Mr. Hilliard?
We can't waive it. Like, we can't waive the wetland issue, even assuming that it is as that map shows, which I believe the map, I just don't know that it's our, it's our jurisdiction.
Well, if, if the bylaw references state code and, and state...
Yeah.
Law, then it's a part of our concern.
I think it is, Jim.
But it's wet, we're not talking about...
It is.
No, we're talking about wetlands, specifically wetlands. And that's what the, that's what conservation is about. I mean, it's up to them to make the decision.
But our definitions reference the state law.
I'm sorry?
Our definitions in the bylaw reference state law. State law trumps bylaws.
I agree with you.
So we have a responsibility to make sure that it's within our purview.
I'm, I'm not suggesting we don't have a responsibility, and I'm suggesting, however, I don't think it's our jurisdiction...
I think it clearly is.
Well, that's, that's what conservation is all about, and that's what conservation's job is to do, is either to issue a permit or not issue a permit. We don't have the jurisdiction to go under a law.
Once again, this is in our, in our code, our bylaw, this language is.
Yeah.
So therefore, we have to use it.
No, I...
It's our responsibility.
Okay, well, we can agree to disagree. I don't think it's, what I don't think it's our jurisdiction to make a determination of whether someone can build or not build, or whether we should issue a permit or not issue a permit, based on what we believe to be wetlands. I think that is what conservation does.
But the, the bylaw clearly says that upland shall mean any land area not subject to the provisions of the Wetland Protection Act.
Okay.
Such as state law.
And I agree with that.
So we need to determine, as a board...
Yeah.
Whether they meet the requirements of lot, which means we have to see whether it's under the wetlands protection or not, to get them to the requisite percent of uplands.
And, but by the way...
That's separate and aside, wait a minute.
Okay, I'm, I just, I...
Separate and aside from the conservation...
I hear you.
Forgiveness.
I just, I just don't, I think it's a reach for this board to deal with wetlands and determine uplands, and because regardless of what we do, conservation will trump anything we do or say, and we rely on conservation to tell us that before we act.
Not in this case, where it's a zoning bylaw definition.
Yes, and, and if I may, if they had answered the questions that the town planner had asked and provided more additional information, we would have that information in front of us.
Right, it's up to the burden of proof on the applicant, and they've submitted...
Right, so we don't have that.
Okay, but we haven't raised that issue yet.
Well, the town planner did.
No, the town planner did, I mean, the town planner did.
Right.
But the question, whatever the town planner has raised is not before us until we put it before us. I mean, we, if we're going to have a discussion on what town planner...
Well, it's relevant to our discussion, however, right? Because we're talking about bylaws and codes and statutes.
And it is.
And it references those, and she is, a part of her professional responsibility is to interpret those. So therefore, if we had had an answer for that, we would have a professional interpretation by the town, and we could make a decision.
That's planning, that's a planning board issue, it is not a ZBA issue.
I disagree.
Everything in that, I haven't read it completely, I just saw it tonight, but the issues in there, a planning board, the planning board has jurisdiction, then let the planning board act on it. If it's our jurisdiction, then we have to act on it. I'm...
No, I'm sorry, the planning board sent this letter of points to the zoning board, Board of Appeals.
Right.
A part of our file, it went to Attorney Kroll.
Right, right.
Is the applicant's burden of proof to come in and show that they've met this, and there's been no proof submitted to show that it's not a wetlands, or that it doesn't rather fall under Wetlands Protection Act. That's their burden, not us, not conservation. They're the applicant. And there's been no evidence to show that this is not under the Wetlands Protection Act. In my reading of the referenced statute says it is wetlands, which means it can't be upland.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Two things, and I'd like to ask if Mr. Crotto could address the, the board from Moran Engineering. One is that the Conservation Commission's only comment to this board was, "No issue with the changing of lot lines, fifteen Doane Road has already gotten approval for rebuilding of the dwelling, four thirty-two Route twenty-eight will need to get approval if they do exterior work or change the footprint of the building or hardscape slash landscape." No mention of wetlands issues, okay? I don't, I, the, the other comment is, I've been to the, to the building commissioner, and he has one opinion. I've been to the town planner, she has another opinion. I've been to the conservation agent, she has another opinion. How does the taxpayer determine what's the right answer here? So given the confusion and the lack of, of a clear, one voice answer, we decided to come before this board and say, "Whatever it is, you can vary it if you think the project warrants it and meets the requirements for variance." So, that being said, Mr. Crotto would like to address the board if he could, if he could.
Good evening, Dan Crotto from Moran Engineering. It's definitely a complicated or a confusing issue when it gets to the definition of lot that has, as was stated, any land not subject to provisions of the Wetland Protection Act. And I think, as Attorney Kroll said, everything within a hundred feet of a wetland resource is land subject to the Wetland Protection Act. And that certainly isn't looked at as all wetland and not counted towards subdivisions. On top of this, and this is, this is, you know, this is one sentence in a definition of lot. Further in the zoning code, you actually have a section on instructions for floodplain regulations. And it includes, meet the state building code, and it even includes requirements for subdivisions in the floodplain. There's a whole section on it, just saying to such minimize flood damage, talks about utilities, talks about drainage, there's a whole section on floodplains in the zoning bylaw. Now, the floodplain, the new, the current floodplain extends all the way, I mean, if you're just looking at Route twenty-eight, it extends right down Route twenty-eight. A very small section of Route twenty-eight is not in the floodplain, all the way from North Road, past Shaw's parking lot. The whole area is floodplain. Wet, oh, you know, a true wetland is a, is an area that sustains wetland plants, it sustains wetland animals. Then the, the jurisdiction of the, jurisdiction of the wetland regs extend a hundred feet from these areas to protect those areas. It's always been the interpretation of the Conservation Commission, and this, this is not unique to Harwich, this, this is, every town hasn't clearly written how to, this area of floodplain. Jumping around a bit, but the hundred-year floodplain means a section of that is wet one time in a hundred years, could be wet one hour in a hundred years. You could see how that should be regulated differently than a true wetland that's sustaining, again, wetland plants and animals. The interpretation of the zoning officer, and the most important interpretation is, as I see, would be the zoning officer, who is the building commissioner. And every, every past commissioner that I've dealt with has not, has interpreted floodplain as upland when it, when it comes to sizing of the, of subdivisions and lots. The project itself, on four thirty-two Route twenty-eight, that whole project is in the floodplain and was in the previous floodplain. That whole subdivision, or that whole site plan was done in two thousand and six, was all done within a floodplain. It's true that the, that the definition doesn't clearly exclude floodplain, and it's open to interpretation. The best, I would think that there's a whole board set up, whole commission set up to interpret, interpret that, and their interpretation gave the wetland line as shown on this plan. They, they approved this wetland line as the, as the wetland line. So I think there are, there is, it is, it is open to interpretation the way that's written, whether a hundred feet from a wetland can be considered part of the lot, and whether this floodplain area can be considered part of the lot, and whether the two-hundred feet from a river is considered part of the lot. But it's, but when further in your zoning code, you, you explain the issues on how to build, on a whole, there's a whole zoning code on floodplain issue, I think you got issue. I think you got to look at, at, at the overall zoning code. And then if there's an issue with interpretation, I would certainly think the zoning officer and the whole Conservation Commission, excuse me, would be the ones to, that their, their interpretation of this definition would be, you know, paramount, the most important. That's all I have to say. And I think as for the project itself, it's, I think, you know, it'd be, use the cliche, it's a win-win in that you've taken a section of land, locking, locking it away right near the wetlands, that can't be used anymore, this, this piece of land to the west side of the creek. Meanwhile, you're getting, you're getting an additional rentable apartment that, without needing to do any more construction of, it's all interior, the parking lot's already in place, both these buildings get upgraded and used. I think it's also important to state that the first step of this, Attorney Kroll asked us to do is, is, is this 13,000 square feet that we're, that we're looking at adding to 432, is it contiguous? Well, it turns out, I mean, if you take 28, I mean, it is contiguous upland. It's not contiguous on the same lot, as in if this, the bulkhead was one foot further north, it would actually be contiguous across the, across the Route 28 shoulder. But the bulkhead, statewidely built their bulkhead on their property, so it comes up right to the edge of this, of this land. But you look, you know, but it is, it's close to being contiguous. On top of that, I do have the site plan for 432, which does show that north lot as, or that northeast area as being, as being wetland line, why we don't have a contiguous upland on, on that 432. Thank you for letting me speak.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this petition? Anything else from the board?
I just want one final thought.
Well, let me close the public hearing first, unless Attorney Kroll's got, oh, okay, never mind, we'll take Mr. [inaudible].
Two thoughts, but, you know, echoing Mr. Hilliard's comments, and Bill Belichick, which is probably the most binding authority in New England, but do your job. Our job is, is very, very specific, and it's very specific in this case, and it's one of the hard things I've learned being on this board for the last couple of years, is I've had to vote for cases that I necessarily wouldn't have wanted to, but I knew that there are other boards and commissions, et cetera, who are looking out for those other issues, and they're going to stop them if they're wrong. So we have to do our job, just as far as the zoning goes. And thinking more about the spirit of the wetland protection law, as opposed to being so draconian in the letter of the law, you know, if the purpose is to protect wetlands, I think that by granting the relief they're, they're seeking, we are in fact furthering the, the purpose of the wetland protections. There's no new building, there's no additional harm to wetlands, and these wetlands then will be protected.
Mr. Donahue had something.
Excuse me. Not to reiterate that, but this whole area is in the Wetlands Protection Act. The property of 14,000 roughly square feet is going to remain within the Wetlands Act. The use of the 14,000 will be added, as Mr. Hilliard indicated, to the 46, 45,400, thus giving the petitioner the 50,000 square feet. Nothing more.
Mr. Kroll.
Yeah. And we just asked the board, going back to my original, my initial comment, was to kind of try to look at the overall picture and not get too academic about it, look at the practicalities of it, look at the benefit to the town. Is this, is there any detriment to anybody going on here? It's a win-win for everybody involved. If you want to stick by the definition of the bylaw, which was probably adopted prior to floodplain zone even being in existence, and try to interpret it that way, that this was, it's a little bit archaic and doesn't meet the current situation that exists now with FEMA and the like, if you hang your hat on that, then you end up with a continuing burned-out house on 15 Don Road and a continuing woeful property that remains on the market. We have a young man who wants to solve both of those problems and has, and is relying upon this board to do, to look at the overall situation and grant relief that you see fit, in accordance with the situation that exists. Thank you.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Donahue. Okay. Public hearing closed. I'll take a motion in the case.
May I be heard before we take a motion?
Okay, sure.
Thank you. I feel that we have no more right with respect to wetlands than if the Conservation Commission denied someone on the basis of conservation issues, and they came before us and we approved them. I don't think we can do it either way. We the conservation authority or we're not, I don't think we are. It doesn't matter whether it's a rule or a regulation. It's not within our jurisdiction. And I think if we go through the statute, now, I'm only making that argument because I don't think that should be something we need to consider. That's their issue and it's their problem. They can come out of here with a win, they can come out of here with a loss, still conservation is going to determine whether they meet the Wetlands Protection Act, period.
But if conservation conversely approves something that did not meet the requirements of the bylaw...
The Conservation Commission has looked at this, and they have not said a word about what we brought up.
Which then came before us.
Yep.
We would rule on it regardless of what...
But you're using, but you're using the wetland thing.
Let me finish, Dean.
Wait a minute, let's interfere with us. Just a second.
No, let me finish. I was talking.
And talk.
I was speaking.
Go ahead.
If conservation ruled on something, and then that petition came before this board, it was a zoning issue, we would overrule con, we'd rule on the zoning, and if it overruled conservation, so be it.
But we're ruling on zoning with respect to wetlands, and that is not within the zoning issue.
It's in the bylaw.
I understand it's in the bylaw.
I disagree.
I understand that it's in the bylaw, but it's in the bylaw because that's what conservation's job is, to determine whether or not this is upland, wetland, or, and it's up to, I mean, I hate to bark on this, I just don't think it is up to us to make that decision.
We don't know if that question was posed to conservation.
It doesn't matter. It's their job to determine it. They have the same maps we have.
I'm not willing to approve it on that basis, because I think, I think it is within our jurisdiction when it comes before us like this.
Okay. Let me, let me just finish my thought.
Okay, Mr. Hester.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You understand that the Conservation Commission has seen the same things that we have seen.
We don't know what they've seen.
They saw the plan. Did they not see the plan? Did they not see the engineering associate plan?
Wait, the public hearing is, okay, you can ask the question.
They saw the plan for number 15 Don Road and showed the wetland.
Right. Thank you. So they already know what the, what the plan said of Don Road, whether it's upland or not, or whether, how it's determined where the 100-foot marker is. All of that is done. They knew it. They approved it from their standpoint of view, not mine, not the board of, not the, not our board here, not anybody's board, them.
The conservation has a no, it's written the same as that, that lot definition. The conservation has a no new structures within 50 feet of a wetland resource.
They have no issue with it.
They don't specifically exclude FEMA land, but it's always been interpreted as true, true wetlands and the riverfront area, which is 100 feet from a river. But they have not, they have looked at this over and over in floodplains, and they've not ever looked at the FEMA as their 50-foot, as the wet...
My issue is they've already approved, they've already approved that, to rebuild that as it is and as it's shown, you know, within, you know, obviously other aspects of it. But wetland standpoint of view, they've already approved it. That's not our purview anymore, I don't think. Now, regardless of what this says, don't forget, these, this particular parcels, or these two partials, parcels, if you want to call them lots, were a heck of a lot earlier than what we've got here, what's now red. They're grandfathered in.
No, they're not.
I beg your pardon. I think they are.
Okay. Go back to the definition of lot. Any lot hereafter, hereafter laid out to be buildable, meaning after...
But that is written to, that's written recently, not when those lots were developed, not when that section was developed.
They want to create a new lot. That's why it has to meet this. They're creating two new lots.
We're giving them a variance to create one lot. That's what we're doing. One lot.
How many lots, Attorney Kroll?
Sorry, I was conferring with my client. I thought we were going to have a vote, a motion.
Okay, but we have a question.
No, we have to do a discussion.
How many lots, the motion's not been, we haven't, don't have a motion, we're still discussing. How many lots are going to be created if we grant the variance, one or two?
We would be, right now, we have two lots existing, and the end result would be two lots.
Two lots.
The same two.
No, not the same two.
Reconfigured.
Reconfiguring.
Reconfiguring one, but not both.
No, both would be reconfigured.
Both reconfigured, both reconfigured. But again, I get back to the fact that the reconfiguration terminology you have here is new compared to when this, all of this land was created for buildables.
That's with the existing unreconfigured lots. Now they want to reconfigure them, so they're going to fall within the definition, any lot hereafter laid out to be buildable.
I see. So you think the town, it's our job, it's our job. You think the town says, "Okay, whatever you did 20 years ago, 30 years ago, is, was right, et cetera, and it looks, and we grandfathered you, and we think it's right." But now that you want to combine those two, we don't think we're going to let you do that.
Excuse me, but the fact is, when they create the two lots, in my opinion, it starts from scratch. These are the two lots. We're looking at the bylaws as written now. Not as well they were written before, but now, they're new lots.
Exactly.
Point to procedure question. Is it possible for the boards to do, I'm not voting, but would it be possible for the board to do an unofficial poll?
Yeah, we could do that. We haven't gotten there yet, but we could also go to, back to the Conservation Commission with questions, and to, oh, I would go to outside counsel, get an opinion.
Yes. I just wonder if we could do an outside poll.
We have, we have time to make a decision anyway, but I just want to be heard on the...
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
On their petition. First off, if you take a look at the map, and it's as simple, we've been waving it around all night long. It's wetlands, it's got a creek running through it, it's got uplands, as it says on the map. If this isn't a piece of land that has unique properties, then I don't know what is. Whether, it doesn't have to have mountains or it doesn't have rocks, it has a unique property. And because it has a unique property, the question then is, can we grant relief by varying something that is required? And I'm asking you for the moment to put aside the issue of wetlands and anything of the nature of conservation, just on the petition. My opinion is, it meets the standard of unusual formation of land, number one. Number two, the question of hardship. Hardship is, is not something that falls out of the sky. It has to be looked at as to the entire project as being proposed. If someone has to come in and without any question has to spend X amount of dollars to purchase a piece of land to develop it, and they need relief because, in order to develop it, because of the structure of the land or because of the way the land is, they need relief, and they're not getting it, then the hardship is, they can build it, but they're going to build it and lose money, and no one's going to build something and lose money. They're going to build it because there is a gain somewhere. And I don't look at it as a matter of us feeling, you know, feeding into capitalism in the sense of where, "Oh, we'll just give you relief, go out and make a lot of money." Thirdly, the town of Harwich, and like every other town, has bylaws and zoning bylaws, so that there is semblance of order, whether or not it's, if you're going to have a 40,000 square foot lot, if you stick to that, we're not going to have these multi-houses on one piece, and we're not going to have a house on a 5,000 anymore, as we do now. Under these circumstances, we're being asked to allow a, I'll use the word contiguous without the definition, to allow contiguous lot of 13,000 square feet to be counted toward a lot of 45,000 square feet, which is in fact together. They're together except for the creek. Being asked to allow that to be counted, so they can put in five units. That certainly does not derogate from the bylaw, because we all end up with 50,000 square feet of land in five units of property on it. I, from my own experience as an attorney, I think this case, absent the wetland issue that you brought up, I think this case meets the bylaw for the issue of a variance and the statute. And I rarely ever make this argument, because I think the statute is next to impossible to prove, just the way it's designed. But if we, if we, if we deny this based on the map that shows this is wetland, I think it's a disservice.
Well, I also don't agree there's a financial hardship. It's okay. Both properties have viable uses as presently configured, so.
The vital uses on this property has shown itself to be a failure. Absolutely. We have a burned-out house on one corner, and we've got a property that has been, looked brand-new several years ago, and it's now falling apart.
But the...
That's all.
But the, isn't it up to them to prove whether or not there's a hardship? It's not for us to prove that.
No, yes, it is up to them. No, 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 I'm not proving it. I listened to what he said, and he basically said, "Listen, in order for us to buy this land, to buy this, not this piece."
That's an opinion. That doesn't necessarily, maybe for him, maybe for somebody else it isn't.
Right. And that's my problem.
That's the point.
This proposal, it might not be financially viable for two units, but the building's got two apartments. It can have any, a number of uses. I mean, it's not like we've had a cases where if we didn't grant a variance, the lot was unbuildable, had no use. That's a different story. That is not the situation.
But the situation here is, is let's look at the history of this. If you say, "Well, they could put some more residential in," or they're less residential, and they could put more commercial, it has been sitting there for the last umpteen years without anyone in there used it.
Maybe...
It's the market.
Maybe the owner's asking too much.
It's not for us to determine.
I don't think, I don't think it's a situation to make those judgments.
You can move any property at the right block.
Well, they haven't proven it.
Oh, you can. You can move it at any price, and then you're talking about it being economically harmful to the owner, and that's not what we're, that's not what we're here for.
There was no evidence showing that, so that's why I would say, no, they haven't met it.
There's no evidence for what?
Showing that it's a hardship. There was, well, that was an opinion. There was, there's no real evidence, and their own attorney said that he wasn't sure.
What evidence is there to show a hardship in this particular, evidence now?
Well, nothing was, all he has said is, "It's not financially feasible for me to do." For him. Somebody else, it may be. I don't know.
Okay. I had, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Okay, so we can take a motion, we can take a straw vote, we can go to opinion to counsel, to conservation.
I'd like a straw, straw vote personally.
Okay, well, let's, I like a straw vote.
And if we don't go, I would like to go back to, like to go to conservation and go back to counsel, because we are not going to resolve, we're not going to resolve a wetland issue. We're not here to do it. We can't do it. That's not our purview, so.
Is that agreeable to the voting members?
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement with the straw vote.
I'm in agreement.
So let's have a straw vote.
I'm in agreement to, to issue the variance. That's my, is that what we're asking about? I'm sorry.
No, we're going to have a straw vote. Just, this is not a motion.
Okay. I'm for a straw vote.
If it were a motion, we'll do it by hands, how many would vote in favor of granting the two variances?
Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a straw vote, not binding.
All right.
One, two, three, four. A pose would be made, so. Okay. Can entertain a motion. Why don't you go? Why don't you go ahead?
I move that the petitioner, where's my paper? I move that the petitioners, Derek and Scott Wolfel, as well as Kim Welch, trustees to their agent attorney William Kroll, approve a variance from the requirement of quote "a lot" end quote in the bylaws into combined portions of two lots to allow the sufficient contiguous upland to build a fifth apartment where four currently exist. The application pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325.2, definitions of a lot, and Section 325.51m, mixed-use development, is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 10. Properties located at 423 Route 28, Map 13, Parcel E4, and CH-1, zoning district, and 15 Dome Road, Map 13, Parcel E3-1, in the RM zoning district.
January. Is there a second to the motion?
Second it.
Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, one, wire. Motion granted, variance granted.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the time and discussion.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It wasn't fun.
For those who are interested, the explorers, one to nothing, Astros. Ooh.
What inning?
I don't know. Probably the third.
Thank you.
Yep, one to nothing. Top of the fifth.
Top of the fifth?
Fifth.
What's the score?
One to nothing, one zip Astros.
Really? Hi, how you been? Tired.
Five hits, Zach. That's my major concern.
Hey, thank you for summarizing that perfectly at the very end, you got, you hit it nail on the head.
Thank you. You know, I couldn't get to the fact that, I couldn't get to, go back to basics, it says, you know?
They're going to sit there and do, yes. So, you having fun yet, Mr. Kroll?
You want to go to Harvard and be the next Gilkey?
No, thank you, I, I worked there, I want to go there.
Are you serious?
I've been there for 40 years.
Bill, was that, where, where was this, your over-under, how long you thought it might take?
Pretty much, pretty much. I got up this morning, I said it's going to be 9:30.
Well, you work for your money today.
Yep, yep.
Attorney Kroll, are you married now? Congratulations.
You're kidding? To that 36-year-old again? Wipe that smile off your face.
He gives us the definition of hope.
I married a lovely woman that I started the first grade with, a high elementary student. We've known each other for the entire time, and...
Recently?
We started going out four years ago, and it's just been wonderful.
How nice to hear somebody like us.
Yay!
Was that the little lady who was at the town meeting with you last spring?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, she's a 13th generation Kate Carter.
Wow.
And has worked at Weir Closet for 36 years, is managing, assistant to the managing partner, and now to the owners. So, very happy, thank you.
Good, congratulations. You're welcome.
Can I get a motion for minutes?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, approval of the minutes, did anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I think I sent back no comment.
September 25th? And I'll take the motion approval.
So, so move.
Second. Second, Mr. Donahue, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, minutes approved. Any new business?
Thought, after that last, uh, case, it sounds like something we might be interested in, in asking town council about, just to clarify, because we weren't 100% together on that. Maybe we could do something like, uh, put a list of questions like that together in the chairman's binder, and maybe to save money for the town, ease of the board, maybe quarterly or, or, you know, maybe six months, maybe ask town council to come and, and meet with us, you know, before or after, just to...
I...
That's going to be budget.
Yeah, they're very reluctant to send...
No, I understand, that's why I said maybe...
If we want an opinion on this, I think...
We could submit, couldn't we submit something in writing and, so that they don't have to come and...
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we, yeah, we could do written questions, that, that would be okay.
What if it maybe, instead of just doing it per question, maybe every three or six months, if we put a, a bunch of questions together?
I mean, I'm, I'm curious, because the planning board issued these questions to us, and if they were issues, why didn't the planning board deal with those issues? Were they saying that they're not our jurisdiction, they're yours?
I don't think they had to go to planning on this, did they?
No.
I don't think they did.
I don't think they... I think it came to us.
Will they have to go to planning at some point? I think they will.
I don't think so, it's not a change of use, really, right?
However, back to the original question, if you wanted to give me questions to, I, we have to fill out a particular form for getting town council opinion. So, if you wanted to get me questions, you know, through, via Dave, and then Dave to me...
Yeah, to me, we can't have everybody...
Well, that's why, that's why I say maybe every few months, instead of just...
Yeah, because we'll have, uh, our town manager at once.
In addition, I have a question from the commissioner, who wondered why we limit the condition to a year or two years, when the permit could actually extend longer than that? He thought we could just limit...
What permits?
Any permit where we have a condition limiting the summer, um, construction.
Yep.
He thinks we shouldn't put a year on it, that it should just be...
We do it because we've had many, many projects that don't go off on time when they plan it.
But, so his suggestion would be to have June 30th to September to Labor Day, period.
Period, yeah, that makes sense.
At all, ever.
I agree with that.
No calendar.
Yeah, why bother?
Yeah, okay, we could do that.
Okay, yeah.
You know what she's saying? For any year, no construction, five years out, 10 days later, whatever, June 30th to September, up to Labor Day.
Because of the permutations of the permit.
Sure, with no years at all, just on and tight, whatever you're doing, you can't, that's a closed period.
Because appeals could, um, happen and extend a permit longer than we think the two years normally for a, a special permit, so he thinks that if there's a problem with doing summer construction, we should just limit summer construction for going to that business.
Just like you say, we observe Independence Day on July 4th, and we don't say what year. We limit development between these dates, regardless of the year.
Yeah, in the projects that have the condition.
Right.
They're limited.
Yeah, right. Good suggestion. Yeah, we can do that, I think. Okay, I have to go to the Board of Selectmen on Monday night to just give the annual report, how many cases, and I don't know, they've got some questions, attendance, it's just kind of a nuisance to go, but, um, it's required by statute, I think state statute, so we do it once a year, all the committee chairs do it, sort of a report card.
Oh, here it is.
What is it? They don't like... No, Shayla gave me the sheet, did that go to the select, the board, the period 2020? They don't like that.
You don't, no. I'm not sure if it did not, double check and set it tomorrow.
The other thing is that...
It's not even mature now, so I think that's what I said.
We need to update members' contacts.
During that...
Sure, oh, yeah, absolutely.
I don't know, if anybody's changed their cell or emails, please let Shayla know.
Speaking of that, and my little, when he was three-year-old grandson used to say, speak of which, which I love so much, it was, it was conversational swagger. Kathleen has asked that we not use her...
Gmail.
Gmail account, but only the XXX, is it, is it XXX one, which one is?
Triple X, what?
No, Muller ZBA.
Muller ZBA, okay, so Muller ZBA.
At AOL.com.
Got it.
Doing business as, is that what, you said DBN?
Or is it to adjourned, Z, zoning?
Okay, thanks, so I'll sort it, if I got a little testy, but I was really focused to that.
Hey, listen, I was enjoying all of that.
There's nothing wrong with disagreeing, right?
As long as it's the end of the night, we all know what...
I learned more in about 20 minutes I probably have in the last three years, how's that going?
When Attorney Kroll said in a nutshell, and then went on for...
How should you adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, second it.